Good evening, welcome to this town council meeting on October ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Let's have a call to order. Robbie Wilson.
Here.
Beth Justice.
Here.
Mary Hansen is absent. I am here. Bill Goldsmith, Larry Tuning.
Here.
Marjorie Austin.
Here.
Having a quorum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under one individual liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see? It's always what happens after their pledge, isn't it?
Are you gonna finish or no?
No, I'm not a singer. Okay, I'll pass it on to Beth. I'm not a singer tonight. Oh, come on. Was it that obvious?
Exactly.
Really?
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Let the record.
I really. I really thought I had some.
Mayo first comment. All right. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. We have two sets of minutes, September eleventh and September twenty five. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to staff reports. Mr. Costin.
Dead with no hat, finally.
No hat.
Yay. Congratulations.
Well, I figured if I had to trim my beard, it was getting that walrus look.
Yeah.
If I had my beard this weekend, it was time to part dawn and losing the hat.
There you go.
But I got out of just in the habit of throwing one on every morning, so I still have some available.
I had my scan on Tuesday and I'm good.
Good for you.
So we've all got good news.
I'm out of the woods. I'm in the salins. I'm out of the thick wood.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. My report this evening, I want to flip things around a little bit because we've got some more recent things to talk about. So I'm going to start in the middle of the report. The kayak launch project is ongoing with adjustments requested concerning oyster shells being implemented after review and approval of permitting agencies. To be clear, the entire area will not be covered in oyster shells, but the perimeter down to the shoreline will be. So think about a U shape. And that will not interfere with access to the launch. The launch is in place if you care to go take a look at it. The big grant reimbursement was received, which closes that project. And as to the grant for the preliminary engineering for the Marina Bridge, which was worked with and submitted with assistance from the Planning District Commission, no word is expected until December. Both of the new entrance signs were placed, as were the prevailing rule signs. And as to the no wake signs, only one source responded. And the proposal needed revision to meet the Department Wildlife Resources Enforcement Criteria. Meeting the Special Events and Finance Committee is requested, but perhaps these can be combined because basically in the situations that have to be addressed, it all boils down to money. And the Personnel Committee meeting had to be rescheduled due to a sudden conflict or had to be canceled due to a sudden conflict. And we are in the process of getting that meeting rescheduled. So let me go to the top of the the report. First paragraph, it talks about some meetings that I'd already attended and reported on relative to water, water financing. And then I've also completed the Water System Emergency Power Capability Survey requested by Virginia Department of Health. And for the groundwater regional supply study, I convey data and operational details on our water system to the Planning District Commission. They'll pass those on to the consultant. Another water provision project is the renewal of the permit for withdrawal. That's our permit for withdrawal. Additional information was needed, and that was provided to the consulting engineer for delivery to the permitting authority, which is DEQ. Okay, so the reason I threw water at the end is yesterday we had an event. Driving back in from a medical, I got a phone call. Cindler was up there conducting normal testing, which requires them to shut off well number six, which is our new well. What we think happened is the backflow pressure from the tank came back into the wellhouse. And if you'll let me kind of do it this way, the water's coming this way, but there's a ninety degree turn in the pipe. And when the water came in, it hit that ninety degree turn and it pushed the pipe back off of the stand, off of the support standard. Somewhere about in here is a coupling. So you got two pipes and a coupling over top of it. The pipe separated inside the coupling and started to spew water all over the place. The technician was right on top of it. He cut off well six. He cut off the backflow coming down from the tank. Cindler came in with a repair crew and got it fixed yesterday. Okay? However, that's a Band-Aid. Okay?
Oh, no.
It's a Band-Aid. I have taken all the information, the pictures that we got yesterday, sent them to Scott Funk with Kim Lee Horn and talked to him this morning. He said, what do you think? He said, well, you can Band-Aid it, Band-Aid it, and Band-Aid it, but you need surgery. So I'm going to be asking for a Water Committee meeting once we get an estimate from Cindler on what can we do to repair it? What can we do in cost? And what can we do to replacement cost? Okay? But our engineer is recommending right now, and he's very familiar with it. He's been in there because of the well six project and everything. He's recommending that we we really consider replacing all the piping that's in there.
Is that the photos that you sent us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I sent the Water Committee photos. If you all want to see the photos or come up there and take a look at it. He attributes a lot of the rust that's up there because there used to be a chlorine tank inside the building. And chlorine just tends to cause things to rust. So it was an eventful day yesterday. Yeah. I do have one piece of good news. Let me end on one piece of good news before I take any questions, and that is the street sign project is done. We received the last two today and will start organizing for a an auction of those street signs that we got back. We got back less than forty street signs.
Wow.
So some of them disappeared before.
Before.
We could get to them. Okay? I may have to take any questions you have.
I have one on this well thing. Does the power, the electrical power for both those well pumps pass through that wellhouse?
Yes.
Because I had been thinking about Richmond's outage, which I don't remember exactly what happened, but basically they had a backflow flooded their basement, took out all their electrical switches here.
Right, right. They are, the electrical is in there. The well, 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 five is in, is there.
Yeah.
And then well six comes into it. So just like well three used to come up into it. So you've got everything going into one set of pipes that then goes up to the tank.
The electric compromised?
Luxury, luxury was not compromised.
It would take a fair amount of water in there too.
Right. But luckily, it's ours isn't in a basement like theirs was.
Right, right.
Still.
Yeah.
I got thinking about.
But fortunately, if again, I go back to my elbow, the water sprayed against the back wall and the electric panel is more closer to the door. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Any idea what ball park, do you replace it?
I asked the same question of Scott Funk today, and he he didn't want to touch it.
Ten, twelve inch pipes.
Yeah, they're good size.
Problem. There's three pictures if you want to look at those.
Well, it's a good thing we went to that workshop where they talked about emergency funding.
Yes, they did. Yes.
Because I'll be honestly, we don't.
You have to go to the left. I don't think it'll, there you go.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, they made a.
Steel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Steel, yeah. And that, that, that blue, that blue coupling, that, that, yeah, that's kind of where the, the two pipes. If you look really close, you can actually see where the pipes separate. You can see the threads.
Yeah.
On top.
Yeah. That's why I said I think that's more important than doing the clean out first.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but just.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Christine, Town Clerk.
The town attorney's not here tonight, Bill?
Excuse me?
We're not having Andrea here tonight?
No, I told her with what we had on the agenda, there's nothing that was involving.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm pretty much, we're in the same place we were last month, still waiting for that final municipal book to show up.
Oh. Is it coming by horseback?
It must be. They did, they told me that they were behind, so.
Okay.
We are supposed to receive the word copy first, so at least then we'll have that. I'm still doing a lot of the same things, scanning files, trying to get rid of duplicate and unnecessary files before the server's replaced. I contacted the Library of Virginia and asked them, I think we talked about last time, what would it take for them to host our minutes? Like so that they'd be searchable like some other localities are. And surprisingly, I did not hear back from them. And then I also contacted them to find out what the process is to give them the minutes from nineteen eighty nine to present to go into that disaster microfilm. And then once we get those to them, once we get eighty nine to present to LVA, they'll have everything from nineteen oh two to present in that emergency vault. Anything ever happen to our paper or electronic records. And, you know, in the future, we're going to work on getting our files system together so that things are a little bit more streamlined. I have a conference coming up at the end of the month for the Virginia Association of Government Archivists and Records Administrator. And this month is Archives Month. So I think that's also why the LVA did not respond because they're, they're doing tours. If you're interested in that kind of thing, they're doing tours of the archives and all kinds of fun stuff this month. If you go look at their.
Is there a Hallmark card for that?
I think so. And then I just wanted to go over more for the public, some ways to stay informed on town happenings. And of course, the best way is to come to these meetings because you all talk about everything. But also I post the videos. I usually try to get them up there the next day, but by Monday, this Monday is a holiday. Hopefully I'll get them up tomorrow, but the video is always up there on our YouTube channel, and there is a link on the town website to that YouTube channel. There's also a form on the website that if you want to receive an email every time any meeting is scheduled, whether it be a council meeting or a committee meeting, you can fill out that little form or just email me or let me know, and I'll add you to the list. Any important announcements and items of interest that we have, we put on the town's Facebook page and website. Those are our main communication outlets. We put our meeting notices out there as well, and there's also a bulletin board in the main lobby where we pin them up there. Public hearing notices, we do all of that same stuff, plus we actually run a public hearing notice in the paper. So the Sentinel is a, is a good place to keep up with what's going on here as well. And then the last thing is I had put together a new resident information packet. So it's got all kinds of information and forms that you might need if you've just moved here. And that's on the website as well under, it's under community, and then you'll see it says new residents. So that's a, a good way to keep informed too. I'll update that once the kayak launch is all done and any other new things that happen. So that I think, you know, new people and people that are already here might want to take a look at it. It's kind of all your information in one little packet. So does anybody have any?
Good job.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Have you heard back on any of the quotes you were waiting on? The Microsoft quote?
Yes. I got the quotes back and I just looked at it and went, well. Yeah, there, there's, it's actually not as bad as I thought it would be. Because if we, if you compare it, it's about six hundred dollars more a year than what we're paying now, which is pretty significant. So I think it's, it's out of our price range at this point. So, but that's something that we'll all have to sit down and talk about as a staff. Because to use Google, we're going to have to start using Google Drive. Otherwise, we can't archive our documents, so. But that's a conversation for another day.
Yeah, I was just, I wouldn't mind seeing him a good chance.
Yeah, I can send it to you. It took him a while to get it to me. He was on vacation apparently, so. All ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
As Mr. Costin said, we've got to have finance, water, and personnel meetings scheduled and rescheduled because we have some things to chew on now. And so there's no reports unless Robbie, you got anything that you want to update?
No. Haven't had a formal meeting, so.
All right. Beth and Marjorie, anything for special events?
Not, not till next year.
No.
Well.
Christmas is December sixth. And our Christmas parade, we're having vendors and, and some special eats. There will be no food trucks on December sixth from ten to four. That's Saturday. We're going to have caramel and candied apples and warm nuts outside of the Wooden Pickle, plus popcorn and hot chocolate. So, but there'll be vendors from the Gilded Crown on Cross Street all the way down to resale boutique. It's all going to be on Virginia and Cross.
Okay.
Is the golf cart contest going to happen again?
It can if you want it to.
I was asking because I had to defend my title.
Okay. Okay.
Have it. If not, let me know.
I will, I will put that in. Would you like to lead that event?
Yeah, I don't want to, I gotta participate though, so.
But you can.
Conflict of interest.
You won't have a conflict of interest. Okay, so I'll put you.
I've got a good idea, even though it's a lot of work.
Okay. Well, we won't let you have a conflict.
No, I can't judge.
And then second Saturday starts back up in May of next year. That's our fifth year. And we're looking to have some shirts and some logoed bottled water.
Hey. Good.
Beth, anything from your end?
You got it all, Marjorie.
And Beth, and Beth, of course, we will definitely have Beth's band back, Sweet Justice, if they'll, if they'll participate with us.
Sure. Better get me on the books now.
Yep, we're going to get you, you got to get you on the books. And Beth, Beth's band pulled in one of the biggest groups. I mean, we've had big, big crowds. Beth pulled in over three hundred and fifty people. So, and we really had a good time. Our, our food truck sold out. Our fifty fifty drawing was great and.
Yeah, it was pretty big.
So we are going to use our fifty fifty part to do a dinner for Oyster Festival and our little group. Because we definitely owe Oyster Festival a lot for four years. They carried our permit and, and helped us out tremendously. So we're going to do a thank you dinner for those folks that helped us.
Okay.
That's it.
Moving on to public comment. Mr. Mayo.
Oh, y'all love seeing me come up here.
We missed you. We missed you when you weren't.
We missed you, yeah.
Back.
William Mayo, three twenty Rappahannock Avenue. I've got two things on the agenda. Number one is next month will be a year that I bought it to step to the dinghy dock. Nothing's been touched. One year. And we go from seven inches to nine and a half inches. Oyster Festival is coming up. Seventy-five percent of the people in sailboats are seven years old and older. We need to get that done.
But what are we talking about?
The little thing when you come off the grass down on the dinghy dock, where the hand railing is, it's them steps right there.
Another repairing step right now down there.
Yeah. Now, another thing is, if you come out of the restaurant on the corner of Bristol's Corner, they put telephone poles up three years ago. Look around them telephone poles, and that is a handicap ramp. It's no bricks and it looks like hell. I went and I looked at it before I came over here. I bought this stuff a while back, but nothing's been done. But I know it's been three years since them poles been replaced, and it does look bad. And if you need bricks, I know a guy's got free bricks that we can put down there.
That was.
Thank you.
I wonder why they put the poles so close to the road?
Was it my understanding is once the poles were done, those bricks would be replaced by?
Yeah, I don't remember.
It's not, it's not just the bricks. They haven't repaired any of the sidewalks.
Yeah. Yes, they have not. So, yeah, we definitely need to figure out what's going on with that because Billy is right on. And it does look really bad. They did some kind of patch, I don't know what you want to call it, before Oyster Festival last year, but never came back to fix it. And then it's all just a mess. It's really a hazard.
Well, Dominion needs to fix those.
Yes.
They took them out.
Mm-hmm.
Beth, maybe you should call Keith.
He's busy being, trying to get elected.
He's trying to get elected.
Well, that'll help him get elected, dang.
All right, moving on.
Okay.
Trying to get elected.
Public comment. I think this is a good time for me to bring this.
Okay.
You can talk right now.
Wait.
Go ahead, yeah.
I figured you.
Kristi Anzavino.
Knew what I was going to say, so you just skipped over me.
Oh.
Bit's a mystery.
No, it's not. Okay. Kristi Anzavino, three five zero Howard Street. I'm just following what Ted just reported to you all about the signs. I take it, Ted, this was the street signs?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. What are you going to do about the poles? They're decrepit. Go, go take a look at some of them. They're peeling. They're horrible. We got beautiful signs, reflective signs, and the poles that are holding them have never been, nothing's been done on them. And I don't think that you can expect, and I'll just speak for Sandy and Jim to do that.
Oh, no.
No, that does.
That doesn't, that doesn't fall under the.
They, you know, I, I have said ever since I brought all this up years ago, Sue and I started it with street signs and then Don Dreher and I got into it. I, we said all along, we need to replace the poles also. And I think we did, didn't Dawn give you a, a, a cost? There was some paperwork on that.
There would, yeah, there was definitely some cost, and the poles were as much as the signs.
Well, we didn't pay for the signs.
And we didn't pay for the poles.
That's because we didn't get them.
Because we didn't get them, but, but, and, and when we first talked to the county, they originally, it's my recollection that they said if the poles were in bad condition, that they would replace them, and obviously they didn't.
Said that.
Wasn't that what they said?
Well.
County.
Yeah, the, the project was kind of ongoing when I got here.
Yeah.
And so I don't know what the.
And it was all verbal, so it's not like it was any kind of contract.
Right.
We just, we basically put the signs to them because it's part of their nine one one system.
And we didn't pay for those, did we?
No.
Okay, so that's what I was.
No, that was, that was the break that basically saved the town about twenty thousand bucks.
Okay, so can we revisit the poles?
Mr. Mayor, I think the priority was on getting the signs up.
Yes.
The directional, the fact that so many have been.
Right.
Down, that the first thing was, let's get signs up, and then they come back and replace poles. I'll give them out a call tomorrow.
Is the county going to pay for those?
That was my understanding.
Yeah, that was, yeah. Okay, that would be great.
The nine one one identification system, which is what we signed on to, that whole resolution was to put the signs in their, in their court, if you will. So it's their responsibility to have proper marking for nine one one addresses.
If they replace them, are we going to get some sort of standardized land pole though? Because we have these nice curly, curly cut.
No.
Make sure, when you asked when he, they say, if they say they're going to do it, can it be something that doesn't have to be painted and peeled paint? Just, I don't know, even just the metal.
Yeah, galvanized metal.
Galvanized metal would be better than.
Yes.
That's just my suggestion. There is somewhere in your papers, files, on the street signs, what Dawn and I found for that one company that would do posts. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Unfinished business, none. Number eleven, new business, Mr. Costin.
I want to revise some of the presentation. The Virginia, this is to designate representatives for voting at the upcoming Virginia Municipal League Annual Business and Section Meetings. The Virginia Municipal League, the VML, has section meetings and an annual business meeting, which takes place at the two thousand and twenty five conference, which is coming up this weekend in Roanoke. The governing body of each locality shall adopt an official and alternate voting delegate as the voting representative for all votes at the section meetings. Urbana is a member of the town section. For the annual meeting, only one voting delegate is recognized. There's no fiscal impact. The staff recommendation is to appoint one voting delegate for both the annual business meeting and town section meeting, and one alternate for the town section meeting, if applicable. The council action requested is to follow the staff recommendation. I'm revising it because we've had a change in attendance. So the sample motion would be to designate Councilmember Marjorie Austin as the voting delegate for both annual business meeting and the town section meeting, and the clerk, Christine Branch, as the alternate. They're, they're the two people that are going to be able to go. And I appreciate Christine taking the spot so that we don't lose the deposit money. So. I may have to take any questions you have.
Need a motion?
Need a motion. All right.
Second.
Motion moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anybody for public comment two?
Can I say something? Cancel response to public comment. There's nothing was said.
Okay, okay. You want to go to the response to public comment one?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to.
Oh, and let the record show that Ms. Courtney is, is now present and has been since the town administrator's report.
I think it's, it's absolutely critical that we stick to the public comment, that when people raise their hand and say, I want to speak, even though it's Billy Mayo, people would be like, that we don't do it. And the reason I say this is because the county and the school board have run into problems recently about restricting people from talking legitimately, but at the same time, they have let other people talk from time to time. But an incident occurred last week or last month with the county, and they've restricted some of our town people from speaking. And they were ticked off and I can see where it could lead to legal problems if you let people, if you let some people do it, and you don't restrict others, particularly when it's a volatile situation. And so the other thing I think we ought to do is we're great. We have two public comment periods at the regular meeting.
Yep.
But I think we ought to have another one at the business.
We do have two.
No, we only have one at the.
Well, we were supposed to have two.
You can study it if you want, but I think it would keep us out of trouble. You'll recall, we had a situation where some folks came in late one time, and we didn't let them talk.
Right.
Yeah, we can't, we have to be insistent with what we do.
Well, then we need to make a motion to have a second public comment at our regular council meeting.
That we do that.
I mean, excuse me, our work session.
You want to have a second public comment?
Yes. There should have been two for both.
Is I'm correct in thinking that we only have one public comment at work sessions, correct?
We're supposed to have had two. That's what my original motion was made for.
I don't remember.
I don't remember that, but that's all right.
You want?
Yes.
You have a motion?
Yes, that was my motion.
Oh, second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
I, I do have a question.
Any opposed? Okay.
So Larry, you were saying if they sign up, that's the only time they speak. They can't wait until middle and then raise their hand and speak again, and that's.
Really have a problem with somebody doing the public comment period, saying, I want to speak. You got a sign up page, but after it's all over, if people raise their head, say, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about this. It's probably no problem to do it for those people, but when there's a problem down the road, you have to be consistent.
Right.
It could lead, it could lead to a legal problem.
Yeah, so it's either we let everybody speak or we only speak if they're on the paper.
We give them plenty of opportunities.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
So you don't want, there's no need for a motion or.
Public comment two, and the public comment one, response, announcements and requests. Anybody down here have an announcement? Marjorie?
I, I do have a quick announcement or a quick question, I guess. Since I'm the liaison for the EDA, excuse me, the first meeting for me to attend is October fourteenth at six o'clock. If anybody has any questions or anything they would like for me to bring forward to EDA, if you could email me or call me, text me, whatever, whatever you may need, because I'm going to be gone in Roanoke.
Right.
So I'm going to leave Roanoke and come straight to the meeting, so I won't have any very much time, you know, to talk face to face, but. Um, so I'm gonna leave Roanoke and come straight to the meeting, so I won't have any very much time, you know, to talk face to face, but anybody's willing to call or message me if there's anything you would like to know or say to the EDA.
All right. Larry, anything else? Alana?
No.
I'm good.
Beth?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, there is one, one major announcement in that as of Monday, we have uh finalized a contract for a new town hall, not in this building, at three hundred Virginia Street, which is the, what was H and H Properties. It is a two-story structure that I think will be adequate. All the council's been through it, the staff's been through it. It's got office space already set up and a lot of furniture already in there that's coming with the deal. Uh, we're set to close December fifteenth is what we're shooting for, and we're going through the uh six hundred fifteen thousand dollars with furniture. And uh, because of the CARES money and the ARPA money and our reserves, we can pay cash, so we won't have a mortgage.
Yay.
Saves us a lot of-
Saves a lot of money for the town.
We're not using taper money.
Nope, no taper money.
ARPA proceeds from the old town hall and um-
CARES.
Yeah, that would, that's our puppet.
Oh.
And it's half the price of this building.
Right. It improves our cash flow, our operating.
I think it was what, twenty, twenty-six hundred dollars a month, something like that?
Yeah.
At least.
Thirty.
At least.
Yeah.
And it's very updated, very nice looking building. All the office furniture is very nice. It won't be hodgepodgey. It's-
Excited about it.
Yeah, we're excited. We're very excited.
Mayor did a good job finding us. He did that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's a good mayor.
No, enough of that. Um, all right, we have no reason to be in a closed meeting. Right?
So that means motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
No discussion?
Second, somebody second.
Second.
All right. Thank you all for coming.
Thanks.
Thanks for getting me.
I got here just now.
Every hand got on down and watched the-